My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prayer please.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and all that you do for us. Please bless all who are here and help us in making good decisions for our borough. We ask this in your name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Roll call please.
Matt Moore.
Here.
Bob Barlett.
Rosal.
Scott Gutsho.
Yes.
Abby Seer. Jim Steele. Steve Nutson. Lisa Nutson.
Here.
Treasurer's report.
Same will same all. There's not really much to go over on it. Nothing out of the ordinary. If anybody has any questions. We're hitting our march where we started collecting our taxes, so the real estate taxes. So that's our boost in the general fund.
Quick question. The LSA grant, which fund did that go into? The $400,000?
$400,000?
$300,000.
That's in the general... Well, we didn't get it.
It's a reimbursement.
Yeah. We just got our first bill today. One of the checks that was signed was for $20 some thousand, so that I'm gonna... And they just signed it as reimbursement for that. It'll go back. It'll go into the capital, general borough capital.
Okay. Thank you.
It was paid out of general borough capital in April.
Any other questions with the treasurer's report? Okay, we'll move into workshop session. Public can participate if they'd like to in this session. And then we'll move into council meeting after we're done with the workshop. First item is the finance. Part of the sewer wastewater fire truck grant opportunities and digester project. So finance wants to take it, or Tyler, you may at this point.
Yeah, if you wanna talk about what's gonna be discussed with the fire truck.
Yeah, so with the fire truck, we had a special council meeting on Wednesday of last week with hopes of kinda nailing down a plan. In the eleventh and a half hour, we kinda talked and heard from Pima, the 2% loan, and from the lender, and the lender was not wanting to have a second lien on the truck. So by getting a lower interest rate of 4.79%, they wanted to be the only lien holder of the truck. By bringing in Pima and that 2% loan, it added a second lien against the truck, which was gonna cause that rate to go from 4.79% to at least 6.79, if not a little higher. He told me at least 2 to 2.5% higher because his lenders at the lower rates did not want a second lien on the truck. So with that information, it kind of put a wrench in the system. And there was some other discussion that was had regarding the truck and what obviously council wanted to do with that. So I think that's where we're at at this point. We have the ability to get a loan at 4.79% on a lease through leasing too. It's just whether or not, how do we incorporate the 2% into that for later date?
So the increase in the lender's rate would be more than that 2% we've saved in the state?
It's about a 20% diff... A $20,000 difference if we did not...
Yeah.
If we did not factor that into it.
Because that 2%, that 400,000, the 2% loan would be a chunk that we would hit off of principal. So it's still beneficial to have it.
Where do we stand with the discussion that we had coming out of the last meeting with some of the terms that we were kinda looking for from Heritage Fire Company?
I just gave him a copy there.
Yeah. I had sent what you had asked me to send, I sent out. I did not hear anything back.
Can we share the list so everybody in the room can see what the terms are? If somebody wants to discuss them, there's a lot of people in the crowd here. I think maybe people wanna see it. They have questions, they can ask the questions.
Can you edit this right now?
Yeah. So I think there was... There's been some discussion coming out of our last meeting. I think point number one there, in my opinion, that should be modified. I think we should reevaluate the allocation on a yearly basis or if we have changes in our financial status. If we get grants, things of that nature, extra money coming in that could end up opening up some funding opportunities for allocations for the heritage. I think that should be reflected in this document. You know, the challenge here is there's only a finite amount of money in the fire tax. And right now, the payments that we have on the apparatus, proposed apparatus, they will exceed what's in the fund. So that's why there is a, we'll call it a temporary freeze in allocation towards the Heritage Fire Company, because the payment is gonna be made on the loan by the borough. It's what, $182,000 a year?
Yes.
That's the allocation.
That's at the 4.79%.
So I would like to see point number one changed. That's my opinion. I'd like to hear everybody else's opinion at the table.
Well, I listened to Scott's theory a while ago, and I'd like to see it reevaluated too. Because there is a possibility, we've applied for several grants towards this truck. And if we happen to get lucky in one of them, that can help the fund and reevaluate their allocation and give them some money. Correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I'm okay with removing number four as well. Just take that whole number four out of there.
Agreed.
Yeah, what point is that?
They just erased it.
Well, I have to bring it back. Control Z is a great thing.
We can't, we can't expect you guys to sell your equipment you currently have because you own that. I mean, you can sell it, but if you decide not to put it towards the truck, that's your business. But I think we can take that off, knowing that maybe if funds go get coming in, we can get some more money towards it. So I'm okay with removing four. All right. Is council okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Point number two, we had talked about, there was a building on Third Street, the old United Fire Building. We'd like to see that revert back to the borough as it states in the deeds. We'd like to get Heritage's cooperation to make that happen. And I think Mark's done a lot of the research on that. Would you like to speak to that now, Mark?
I prepared a draft deed, which is, you know, simply giving the... All of the interest of the heritage in it to the borough. You know, there are, as you said, reverts in the deed that it would go back to, portions of it would go back to the borough anyway if it's not occupied and used as a fire company. The borough will still have some issues, namely with this heirs of the McMeans, but that's something you can deal with down the road. That's not a project.
I think probably the other big one on this list is point number four. There's, you know, we had talked originally about a contribution from Heritage towards the purchase of this apparatus. The borough's gonna be funding all the money from the fire tax fund. So what we'd like to request is that 27.5 from the sale of that apparatus go back in to replenish the fire tax fund.
People in the crowd are a lot afraid to talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yep, this is an open session.
So what you fail to keep in point with that is the equipment for the ladder truck had to be purchased to, you know, value of more than 27. And that doesn't even count the tool mounting. So you guys haven't even seen that number of stuff get with.
You're talking about for equipment on the truck, for on the truck? So as our chief, if I'm incorrect, you indicated that the stuff off the old truck was going on the new truck. Was that correct?
I said it could, yes.
Okay.
Because if you put the new truck in service, that other one is gonna be pretty much stripped. I never could understand why they thought they... Just because it's a new truck, that it had to have new equipment. As far as the tool mounting, I don't see why we can't do that in-house. That's just my opinion.
Any consideration to take to that is if there was a planned purchase and has equipment that the current truck doesn't have because of our borough audit of what the fire department should be.
Well, I know you had to buy hose. But as far as hand tools, fans, saws, that stuff can be taken off the old truck and put on this truck.
The hose, I think, was about $34,000.
And that's been purchased already? Has not been purchased. Is it something you can reuse off the other truck?
There's no hose on that truck.
Oh, there's no hose on it?
There's no pump on it.
So what was the plan to get the hose?
Pardon me?
What was the plan to get the hose?
The new truck has a pump, so it has preconnects and a small amount of supply hose for that where the existing truck does not have a pump, so it doesn't need anything as far as hose.
So the number that we have going forward here for the... Is not, that number is not, does not have your extras on it. Yeah, that's what, that's what Mr. Jamison told me down at E. One Line, or down at Lancaster. I talked Fire Line.
The price tag is forward and ready to buy itself.
Right.
May I ask a question? A statement was made last week that if the borough purchases this piece of apparatus within three years, allocations for the city hook and ladder will cease to exist also. Is that true?
I just stated that there will not be any fire tax money available because of paying the loan unless, unless some other money source comes in.
Well, if there's no fire, if there's no allocation, we mustn't shut the doors. Because we're not gonna stay afloat.
Well, I think, the question was, I think, the whole, in the whole community, there wouldn't be any.
Mustn't shut the doors.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
There's gonna be a float if we don't get no money coming in.
Because the fire tax is 2.6 mil and the ladder truck costs $182,000. Where's the rest of that money at?
There's insurance and gas.
That opens out of that.
And now there'll be another 700, apparently 7,000, it said, around 7,000 for the insurance.
There was also noted in a meeting by Kim Zimler about the fire tax going to the free bill. It never did.
I saw, I did see the Sentinel article for that. That was never discussed by council. It was never discussed in committees. That's something Kim sent to the Sentinel.
It wasn't discussed in committees because I don't know if it was discussed.
It wasn't discussed in the committees I was in the last year, I can tell you that.
Even if the tax was raised, never bring in an extra approximately $40,000 a year. That's still not keeping us where we're currently are, who we fought hard to get to.
I mean, I think the answer's black and white to all of this. The Borough Council has the option to create the Littlestown fire department. It already is here. Put everybody under one roof, eliminate apparatus, and you guys pay for everything and decide what happens with set purchases. So you're not two different stations, you're not people arguing, you're not buying multi-apparatus. You're one roof, single purchase.
I mean, you take our allocation money, we're gonna do it through the doors.
Yeah.
I mean, there goes the payments for our... The allocation money doesn't even cover the payments for our apparatus. It's allocation money plus another 17 grand that we add to it every year. Not to mention all the fundraising that we do to purchase everything else, to pay our bills, to keep the lights on, it's everything. And all of that comes from spending our lives there, basically, just to provide fire service for the community that you honestly, as the Borough Council, have to provide. I mean, you can go get mutual aid, you have us fine in Danny, but mutual aid is what it says, mutual aid, where outside companies come in and we go out, a mutual agreement. But if there is not a fire company here, that mutual aid, Dairy Township can decide to bill you whatever they want the second wheel turns out of any of their stations. That could be thousands of dollars for every call, whether it smells and bells or it's the real deal. Just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, I think everybody sitting on this council recognizes the contribution of both fire stations and the community. And, you know, we wanna do what we can to make sure we see that both of the fire stations are successful. You have to remember, there's only a finite amount of money. So, you know, with that being said, these are some of the things that were discussed in the last meeting we had on, what, last Wednesday? I guess my question will be back to the folks from the Heritage. I don't know if you have the proper representation here or not tonight, but are you guys...
Scott, before you get in there, I think, I think we could probably pull number three off of that list as well. Because the chief has already explained to me that that's already gonna be done.
Is that better?
All officers, drivers, basically.
So that needs, we can, we can, I think we can safely pull that off. Because Bob has indicated to us that that was already gonna be done, so let's get that out of there.
We've talked about that numerous, as I took every reading as I was the acting chief until I was put forward to, I wanted cross-training on those stations when I was asked.
About number five, I would think that should be up to the chief of the department that you hired. I'm sure that's Borough Council. Abby, did you catch that? They were talking about number five?
Yeah.
Trucks not to go out of town on brades without permission from Borough Council. I know you had expressed some comments on that, and you wanna speak to that, or?
Well, I don't think it should go out of town, period.
I mean, the truck's gonna have to run mutual aid.
Yeah.
I mean, it has to run mutual aid calls, so it's gonna have to go out of the borough for some calls.
Well, I don't think it should. That's my opinion.
We expect them to bring their stuff into the borough if I need it. I can't deny them.
There's other, there's other ladder trucks around here.
Yeah, we use them in the borough. We use them in the borough too. So that means that if I can't let a piece of apparatus leave the borough on a mutual aid call, they're not gonna let their stuff come into our borough for a mutual aid. I don't really rely on them just as much as they rely on us.
Well, I don't think, I don't think there's any place needs two ladder trucks.
Well, I disagree with that.
That's my opinion.
Mr. Shu, you know how, what is that number?
What's that?
For the hose? Do you have an idea?
I know that we did, we had a hose tester, a hose guy down there, and the numbers that came back, he wasn't even the expensive one, and they were well above that.
And that was just for the five inch supply line?
That was for all the hoses on the vehicle, and it doesn't, it doesn't carry that much hose.
Right, right. Because it don't hold a lot of room, yeah, okay. We don't know what that number is.
The people that would have the number do aren't here, so I can't give up. I'm just here to advocate for resources that Littlestown Borough needs.
Well, going back to number five, I can live with a adjustment down to that. I'd like somebody to make the statement here. We do rely on local municipalities for mutual aid, okay? And there's no way, and heck, I'd wanna refuse local municipality of mutual aid. Now, I'm not a big fan of a piece of our equipment going to another county someplace just for a standby sign and not being used. I think that needs to be regulated a little bit. But I can live with the truck furnishing mutual aid for the local municipalities and also leaving up to the chief where they go for a parade or something.
So are you saying you wanna remove number five, Bob?
Yes. I have enough faith in chief. He's not gonna either go somewhere where it's gonna be going for a four weekend or whatever, you know?
No, Tyler, can you take that off?
I mean, that's, you guys have a say in that too, not just because I made a statement.
No, that's fine. I'm okay with it. So we're down to the original, well, we changed number one a little bit and down, and then two, three, and four kinda stayed the same. So were you guys looking to use that 27.5 for equipment for the new truck? Is that what was really planned on it?
That was my recommendation, what they decided. You guys, I've been...
Yeah, it's been like you've been working here.
So I don't know what has gone further as far as that.
If the 27.5 isn't going to Heritage to use for their use, it seems kinda silly to even have that money exchanged hands. Because that 27.5 is gonna go into, from the City Hook and Ladder's account into a borough account just to turn around and come right back out. You understand what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
It just, it seems ridiculous. It doesn't have to go into the, it doesn't have to go into the fire tax. It can, I mean, but what we're paying for it can go to a Heritage, to Heritage.
Counselor.
I know, but I'm asking, I'm not the only one speaking here. What, what do you guys, it's not someone's 27.5? Maybe we should get the treasurer to try and get if we allow them to have the 27.5. Is there sufficient funds?
Or they could, or they could give it to the borough and then they'd give us the bill for the hose. And maybe the hose out of that. You'd have to put more money towards it, but, or use that, pay for that portion of the hose and then they could progress.
Chief, how much did you say the hose was?
We don't know. I'd have to get ahold of Abby and find out.
It was like $34,000 for the...
$34,000? Is that for everything?
That was for all the preconnects, the larger hose, everything it needed.
If they let you keep that 27.5, would you have, would Heritage have the money to make up the difference for the hoses?
That is beyond me, the assistant chief, I don't know. Representatives from Heritage Center, so.
Larry?
Well, somewhat related to this question, the 27.5 for the sale of that rig, we still haven't received the title for it yet. There's no word on the title.
That's in Harrisburg. It's between Harrisburg and here somewhere. We have no idea where it's at. There was a, when they investigated the title for that piece of apparatus, it was still showing a lien on it and it had been paid for for over 10 years. The financial institution that it was through never gave the state the paperwork that it was paid for. They never had the title in hand after it was paid for after 10 years. It was locked up at the, in the state, so that's where it's at now. After doing some research, they notified them in Harrisburg, and now it's just, you know, how deep in the stack of papers it is.
No names, just clear and all that kinda stuff, and it's in the process of...
Yeah, but it's, it's in the, it's been in the process in Harrisburg for almost two weeks now. And we're just, we're just waiting for it to come from Harrisburg. But like I said, they never, they looked search high, high hell water to find that title, and it comes up that they never had it in the first place after it being paid for for over 10 years.
So if we would give the 27, 27.5 to you folks, that would leave about $6,500 to pay for the rest of the hose. If the longest the hose comes into 35, or 34,000. Can you guys come up with the 6,500 to pay the difference?
Can we reevaluate the hose as far as how much is actually needed? Huh? Yeah, I mean, obviously, we don't have a lot of LDH later on, so that's definitely something that needs to come. And, and then I think we could probably come up with enough to get two preconnects on for now. Or buy the five inch and buy whatever inch and three-quarter hose will allow within that 27.5.
I'm trying to find out a number right now.
Okay. Listen, we're not, Brandon keeps saying that he feels like the, what's the word he was using?
Bully.
The bully, yeah. That's not what we're doing here. We just, there's just no funds. There's, there's not enough money coming in. And I keep hearing about raising the fire tax. It's only gonna get you $35,000 to $40,000 more. We have people still not, currently not paying their sewer rates, their garbage rates, their, their taxes. And, and you, you bill these people more money in the borough, and they're not paying it. It's, it's, we're gonna start operating in the red. We just got ourselves out of a freaking mess from Kim. I don't think there's anybody around here that doesn't say we don't want the truck. Don't get, let's get that straight, because I, I'm tired of hearing it. We're not saying we don't want the truck. We just gotta find a way to pay for this truck that's suitable for us and suitable for the community. I don't feel taxing is, is a way to do it. We have some other things that might come up in executive session tonight. Did you have that meeting today? Okay, so there's a possibility, there's some other avenues, but I can't elaborate on that at this point. So I just wanted to get that out there.
What are you guys in agreement with so far among yourselves of these statements?
This is, this is the original four that we gave, Mr. Basen. Well, you were here the other night.
I was talking to Brandon today. The first thing he wants to do is he wants himself, me, Abby, and the three chiefs to sit down with you guys and come to an agreement. Because he already made the statement that I have signed nothing to like, period. He's gonna sit down with you guys and come to some kind of agreement.
We can talk about that, but the, the, I think there's gonna be, I think there is gonna be an agreement signed. I know he doesn't wanna sign. He talked to me about that.
Right.
But council wants that signed, so there is gonna be an agreement signed. The problem is, we're in limited amount of time. These folks are going down there next weekend, right?
Coming down this week.
Yep, and the check has to be in hand of them seven days, seven days after then. So we don't have a whole lot of time.
I understand that.
And Brandon's out of town all week. Is that correct?
Correct. He'll be out of town till Wednesday, then he'll wake up at surgery, so he's still on.
So this actually has to be, this has to be taken care of by middle of next week.
I said his number three stays, or does it go away?
Well, let's wish it councils.
I'm okay with that.
I mean, we talked about it.
I'm okay with that going back towards the hoses that they need to buy, but I'll be honest with you guys, don't take this the wrong way. We're buying a $2 million fire truck. How could we have not have priced that into the quote? We're at the 11th hour here and we're talking about hose for the truck.
I don't disagree with that.
I'm sorry?
I don't disagree with, there was stuff that should have been put into this that was not initially because it was Russian.
I have a recommendation from finance at the back to, to the fire committee. Go back, if we buy any more apparatus in the borough, there has to be a financial plan for the apparatus. That's the whole problem. There was never a financial plan for this. Was it, was it run by council? Yeah, it was, but there was never a plan. I mean, I think everybody can admit that that's a true statement.
Oh, yes.
This is why we have this discussion, perhaps.
That's why I ask about any purchases from now on, it's on the books that anything over five thousand dollars has to go through me, then you guys. That will never happen again as long as, unless somebody changes.
And there ought to be a requirement that there should be a financial plan associated with it.
Well, I disagree. I mean, I, I gave Brandon and numerous times, you know, when I went and bought a fifty-two thousand dollar truck, that's only fifty-two thousand dollars. And I made sure I had my money in my pocket before I went and signed on the dotted line. And I don't know if they were just going by past council, you know, what they were promising them.
And I mean, I want to make one thing clear, I want to reiterate what Matt said. I think everybody sitting up here wants to see Lewis Town Borough get this new truck to help support the community.
I agree a hundred percent with you guys.
It's anti-truck, we want this ladder truck, the challenge is paying for it, that's finances, folks. I'd like to have new Mercedes-Benz in my garage, but I don't, I can't afford it.
Yeah, I know.
I just have one thing real quick, and I know that Matt's sitting back there and I want to just, I've talked to a couple people and Reedsville has gone through, I think the Bank of Green County is it, Matt?
That's correct, out of New York.
And when they ordered that rescue out there, they've actually been paying on it for what, two years now?
Yeah, we're gonna make our third payment.
Yeah, so that's, you know, as we get down the road in the new apparatus, I mean, that Bank of Green County seemed like they really worked well with fire departments, so that's an, an option, you know, they have three payments on their new rescue truck and they haven't even started to build it yet, right?
Correct, they won't be ready for it.
So that, I mean, that, that was, you know, an example of the plan, so you know, moving forward, we're in place, now these things are in place, I think that's.
And not only that, if I stay corrected that.
Local banks will do it too.
Obviously, they have the clause in there that if it's not done in a certain date, E1 sends an M check.
We, well, we prepaid, so we're actually getting paid every, every day, we're making money on that truck, we. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm the finance guy, but he's right, we, we did pre-plan, we, we had our financial plan ready before we ordered the truck. That way, we have it making money for us, every time they tell us there's a delay, we're actually happy because we're getting more money back.
We're getting a check at the end of it. Yeah.
So, and that Bank of Green County, they have to have an emergency service as a branch, like it's a division of their bank ran by a former fire chief, they gotta be.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, you know, I think using those resources moving forward, that's, it's a perfect way for them.
All right, going back to the twenty-seven-five for the sale of that engine, I won't have a problem with that money going back to Heridage after the city receives the title, check's laying up there to pay for it, I feel it's not fair to receive the title before the money's turned.
I don't expect, I don't expect that money to change hands until they have title in. Nope, no problem though. Yeah, I, I mean, we, uh, I talked to Gina the weekend, there's some, uh, some more outlining issues that they're, we're gonna get looked at today, see what it costs and they have every right to not want to put any more money into it till they have the title to that piece of apparatus, and I told them if it's something that they don't want to take care of, take it out of service. There's no sense of putting more monies into it until they have the title.
I thoroughly agree, I'm okay with that.
So I'm gonna drop this in Heridage, where do you want to go from here?
If you can make me a copy of that, make me a copy to draft it, Mr. Remy's making up for the building, I will call a special executive meeting and we'll handle that this week. Before Thursday.
Do you want a copy of the terms and a copy of the, of what Mr. Remy asked?
Yes, for the only one on Third Street.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
What, what's the big deal?
That's what I got it, I don't, I don't have.
Do you want to mail, email it?
That wasn't my building to begin with.
Well, it's right in the, in the deed that it was on the firehouse against my.
Understand that.
Right in, you know, I don't know what the question is. Yeah, but that.
Can I send it to Brad, Brendan and Abby now so they have it, is that all right with you?
Yes. Are you sending that too?
Yep.
Then we'll call a special meeting before Thursday, because our company meeting Thursday, I'd like to handle this before Thursday, so.
Just be in contact with me.
I, I guess what I'd like to say is, I'd like to see some prompt dates because time is of the essence, when is, when is full payment due?
Seven, twenty-second. Right, Matt? Twenty-second, that's, that's seven days after, yeah.
It'll be taken care of this week.
Okay. So anything else you guys would like to talk about, about the fire truck?
When did you suggest to have this meeting, Larry?
We got a company meeting Thursday, but I'm gonna, soon as I leave here, I'm gonna get ahold of the, the executive committee, both meeting in, so it's probably gonna be either tomorrow or Wednesday. That way, we have already done it, it's over.
As far as you know, as far as you think this will fly out?
Should. I don't see any reason why not.
Okay, then once, once we'll do, what we'll do is we'll give, we'll give Tyler the authorization pending the return of that, he can sign the contract and get the bank stuff taken care of.
And just to be clear, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but on point number one, the allocation for the rest of the year, that's gonna be the payment going towards the truck.
Okay.
And in three years, what happens to the city's allocation?
Can I ask a question? So apparatus purchased in the past, I, I understand we didn't want to go with a twenty-year limit, I'm not saying that, but the vehicle itself brand new is a twenty-year vehicle, it's a specialty vehicle, it's not one year in place every ten years, like an engine if it's more wear and tear. Is it something that you can refinance down the road and bring it down that would eliminate some of the big payment? I mean, so the thing should be here for at least twenty years, there shouldn't be any reason why the time outside doesn't be twenty years.
Or more, you know?
You guys talked about that, right?
Yeah, I think it's a possi- I think it's a possibility, and I said to, to council members too, I said, if we, you know, we can push this payment out till April of twenty-twenty-six is our first payment, when I'm talking with Lisa too, that gives Summer and I some time here between now and the end of twenty-twenty-five to see what grant money is still available, to see how we could apply that two percent loan. And I know that the governor's putting some potential money in his budget for next year that we'll know about in June. So I think there's different avenues that we can look at, this gives us a little bit of time between now and, you know, that first payment to, yeah. So I think there's possibilities there, and there's, there's some representatives at both the federal and state level that are, that I've been in talks with about certain things, so I, I feel pretty confident that, you know, we may be able to pay for this thing sooner than what we think, so. Just give me a little more time is what I need.
And then as for SCPA, does that money get tied up by any of the money from the rig?
No.
Have we discussed that before?
So I'm looking at CDPG money and, um, potentially that money from the governor's proposal.
What we may do, um, Brian, is we may end up getting reimbursed for the payments we make towards the fire truck, just getting the money back into the fire.
But then we can put it on too.
When will it need to be paid?
I think when we make the initial purchase, it should be like thirty or sixty days after we're proud of it.
We have committed ourselves to the hogging of that SCPA, that's in the making.
And I'm actually working with Grandville Township Fireman's believe also, so that way, with us going together, making a larger order, it'll bring the price down some more for us, so we actually save us some more money, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna circle back to Gina's comment, she made a comment about the city's allocation, what happens in three years, well, we're working on alternative funding sources, we're looking at grant money, if we get a, a sizable grant, that's a game changer for all, because it changes the discussion completely. We do have other options if we have to, if we have to go into those other options. I'm sure nobody here around the table would want to see the city fire company go without. You know, one of the things we have to do is we kind of have to make sure that there's kind of a, an equitable uh, sharing of the funds across the fire stations, and, you know, I'll be honest with you, this truck is, this truck has kind of created a challenge with that. So this is, this is the situation we're in. So, but I think I would ask both fire stations to look at it like this, we're one fire department, that truck will belong to the fire department for the Lewis Town Borough, so don't look at it as one station versus the other station that belongs to the fire department.
That's the way it appears now, one against the other, my, my view of this.
Correct.
And I'd like to go on record also supporting what Mr. Gachal said a little while ago about there's nobody on his council that doesn't want to see this fire department. And Mr. Gachal has put in a, on the top, and effort, trying to figure this out, how we can bring this truck home. But it was put together backwards, the way I see it. You're gonna make a big purchase somewhere, you're gonna have a plan put in place, you're gonna be able to cover the cost. If not, you put it back on the shelf until you save enough more money, earn enough more money to go get the truck.
Mr. Shute, you had said something at the beginning of the meeting, I think we're headed there, we're there now. With the, the one, I, I.
This fire department is the most positive I have seen it in my thirty-eight years of being alive, that I've never expected to be over right now, there's so many positive things going on.
I just ask that it not be a rushed process? Because something like that big of our, of a merger, so to speak, can't be something that's expected to happen in six months and a year.
Oh, you're looking at years.
Thank you. We just have to take everybody's interest.
I know.
I think something else too, I'll be the idiot to say this, but I think most people here at the table agree with me, we realize we're not blaming this stuff on you guys, you guys had a bunch of smoke thrown up your rear end that nobody knew anything about, no plan was ever shared with the previous council was here before we got here. And, uh, we're not blaming this to you, I can't blame you for jumping on the wagon when the guy comes and makes all these promises to you. But look what we're into, and we'll do the best we can to take care of this.
Yeah, and I think it all starts with having an open dialogue, like this discussion that we had here today. We're just sharing the facts, you guys are sharing how you feel about it, we're sharing the facts, that's what we want, an open dialogue. And, uh, we certainly do appreciate everything the fire department and both stations do for the community.
Matt, did you want to say, I, I saw you committing the meeting tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to actually want to see what was going on, I heard bits and pieces for the community, so, and then me and the sales rep, you know, for this, this vehicle, you know, we just want to make sure that the fire lines be wanting, not being over that, and a negative review based upon how this went through. We, we worked hand in hand with the former borough manager and council, and, you know, we heard the same stories that the fire department heard. You know, we spec'd the truck, we, and like, is it Mr. Gachal that you're in? Yes. As you said, you know, why wasn't some of the stuff included in the pricing, we know what we do, when we spec'd the cities, we, we spec'd in stuff. If the fire department says, hey, spec in hose, spec in, you know, loose equipment, we do that, so it's in the original loans, the fire departments aren't trying to pick that up later on their own. That's where they made it very clear, you don't want any of that in there, he wanted the truck and the truck only, you know, ran through the meeting, called me that night from the meeting, and then he was, and then he came with a signing. You know, we did as we were asked to do, I just, I just don't want the borough, Lewis Town and the fire departments and, and anybody that watches it on TV to think that E1 or Fireline did anything wrong, we didn't, we were asked to do, we, you know, and we do, we spec'd a very good truck, and we talked about it about twenty years, you know, we expect it to last longer than twenty years. We spec'd very good solid equipment, and I think will serve the borough, Lewis Town very well. And, you know, as far as Fireline need one, if there's anything we can do, please let us know, I, I know you guys have been working directly with Mike and Brad Myers and Lisa too. You know, we're definite here, we, we always want to help the fire departments, we're not just about selling, we're also trying to help where we can with the contracts allowed. So in the future, you know, if there's, you know, like you guys said about it should be the borough involved with the purchase, you know, we work very well with local governments, we work very well with the fire departments, we do our best to try to obtain a vehicle that will suit their needs at the price that will work. And, and like I said, with what was promised with the former council and the former borough manager, we spec'd, as we've reported spec'd. So I just, that's all I ask, that, you know, just please don't look negatively upon that, because it's a lot of, in the community, it's, it's bad looking right now.
We didn't have a negative outlook on you guys, Matt, you know, I was involved in the purchase of a new truck off of you guys, I seen how the pressure you were. There was never anything negative, so, uh, you never did that, so.
All right, anything else before we move on?
Can I just ask that when the other gear is getting purchased, if, if that could come to the finance committee meeting, like the, that gear?
Uh, I mean, the air packs?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll make sure you're at finance.
Yep.
Yeah, that's gonna give us some solid numbers.
We're actually meeting with MBS this month, FRP next month, and then we can bring them numbers in.
Okay, thank you.
The interior is involved in that.
I remember too, sewer rates, yes.
Real quick, I'm just talking to Brandon, why that be even more like?
Thank, thank you, Larry. All right, thank you. Sewer rates, refuge, delinquent status, and shut-off notices, where are we with this?
All right, so we are upon the cycle one delinquency shut-offs. We will, we're convening tomorrow morning as a s- internal staff, just so we're all on board, where you can kind of see where our utility billing delinquencies are as of January one through Ja- April first, so we had it tick up, but now we're back down, so. We're headed there, we're, we're getting there, um. You know, we started at five nineteen and as of January one, ticked up to as high as six thirty, and then back down here in April first of twenty-twenty-five. Again, we talked about this, I think, in the last count, in the previous council meeting, you know, this is such a moving target of trying to hit a, an exact number and past due balances versus current, you know, you got thirty days, sixty day, ninety days past due, so it, it's a big moving target, but, um, note, shut-off notices will start to be posted here in the month of April, um, for those cycle ones.
Okay.
Is this still part of the fluing, or are we done with that?
No, we're still in, we're still in open work session.
Okay. If the fire department is part of the borough, as is the police department, why do we have to pay our sewer bill? The police department doesn't get a sewer bill.
Fire utilities recovered.
Yeah, they get, they get the sewer bill.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah.
Yeah, they got sewer bill, like we even have sewer bills for like the community center that we pay.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm saying is, pay our sewer bill. I mean, I understand there's not monies to do other things, but something that, that.
Well, I can see where Gina's coming from here, that promise made to us about two years ago, that are the telltale to be taken care of. All the same thing you guys went through.
I think Chief Douglas has something on that too, that we talked about earlier that he's gonna bring up here, so just stay tuned for a second here until he gets, I don't want to take his thunder.
Oh, it's no thunder, they even light, they can eat that bright.
So, yeah, so that's where we are. Somebody have anything that you want to add to that?
Okay, grant opportunities.
All right, so I continue to meet, um, with many different people, uh, this morning I had a phone call with Representative Joyce's office, some people from Washington DC, Appalachian Region Commission, um, CETA COG, a lot of different people that we're gonna start a, a plan here of how to move forward with some additional funding. Obviously, if we look at a Pennvest sewer infrastructure loan, we're looking at ten to fifteen million dollars through Pennvest. But there's some avenues to lessen that, that amount for our sewer, and our DEP can send over, so. Um, there will be a press release on the twenty-eighth of this month, and I will share more as I know more um, with Representative Benny Hoff about some funding, so the twenty-eighth at two PM, I don't know the, all the details, I'll find them out tomorrow, but that will take place, um, so, yeah. GSL's been great to work with.
Digestor project bids? I know they're out, right?
Yeah, no, so Digestor Project bids, they are out, we opened them last Thursday at eleven AM. Um, and I have in the agenda here for us to award, um, those bids tonight to, uh, two different entities. Um, we actually, there's a decrease in cost. We met with One Water Technologies this morning about their alternate roof bid, and it's roughly about a hundred thousand dollars in savings. And we're getting all new stuff, new blowers, that is not part of the original roof. So we're getting more at a discounted price, not a discounted, but a lesser price. Very impressed with this, with, um, their product. So, I do have just two amendments on my end that I need us to make then, when we get to that section. So, but yes, we're looking twelve, maybe to sixteen weeks now, and we'll have a roof on Digestor finally.
Any questions on that, from anybody?
All right, let's move into streets and parking, uh, North Park Plaza and street sweeping. Yeah, so, go ahead. So North Plaza lot, this is just, um, Mark had drawn up a ninety day, uh, resolution trial and error here of taking out part of the meters in the upper lots. So we can replace them with parking by permit only signs, save the meters, um, recycle them. I have a gentleman coming on Thursday to look at our meters, to talk through some things, how we can get maybe then recalibrated, our twelve hour meters down to two hour meters. Our threes to twelves and stuff like that, based on our need within the town. Um, so we will enact, we will act on that here as well. And then street sweeping, it starts Sunday night, so pass the word. Ticket enforcement will be out starting Sunday night for street sweeping, and then it will carry through, um, November. That's all I got.
Anybody else saying for streets?
Hey, Matt.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yep.
So, once again, I know the previous administration, we talked about this before, but, you know, there's some of these homes like mine right up front, we have a two hour parking there for our home. And I, there's something that can be done about that.
What, what, you sent me the streets and stuff, so like.
Yeah, it's right here, it's right here.
Oh, it's right here. So that's something we can look into, I mean, it depends on how it's written into the ordinances. Like, one of the things that we changed was like the first two blocks of Market Street, those folks had to move every single night for street sweeping. So a long ordinance I brought to them, how about we take that out, make it just one night a week? So from Wayne Street to the Five Points, you still have to move every night because they're cleaning up the downtown. But those first two blocks of Market Street, wasn't fair to those residents to have to move. So, for you, so something like that, we can take that to long ordinance and look at.
Yeah, that's, that's the same for the past several years, I don't ever read that.
You're right, we're hearing.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I get it, like.
What's your address?
Nineteen Orkney. Where do you sign your coi health?
Take a bargain, bar manager supply.
Then you never know where I'm parking anyways, and sometimes I don't remember where I parked, and I go, that one, I parked out there.
It's one of those things where if you take the meters out, yeah, everybody that works in town will park there, and you don't park them, but like, it'd be at least a twelve hour meter.
Do you get a parking pass?
Yeah, we have parking pass, so you can look over it. Same in general, like, I know that's a lot of things that we're, you know, uptaking people on your borough Louis Town residence page, you know, that's one of the things that people complain about.
Right, and obviously the, the big ones downtown, that helps with business turnover and just keeping more people moving throughout the day, but, you know. We'll slowly have these side street conversations of how do we, how do we maximize those streets and parking meters, so, yeah, no, I can definitely look into it.
I appreciate it.
Anything else for the work session at this point? If not, we'll move into the general, um, amendments. Amendment, is there any amendments?
Yes, so can I have a motion to change letter F from eighty-nine hundred to seventy-six hundred? To be paid out of wastewater treatment plants?
You getting this, Louis?
No. You, I think you can, maybe just go off what I said.
Yeah.
And then I need to change letter G from one million four hundred and nine thousand three hundred to one million three hundred and nine thousand. Three hundred, to be paid out of wastewater treatment cap.
So we need a motion to, just a motion, general motion to change it.
Yeah.
Make a motion to change, we have to say the amount, just to be honest.
Yeah, just amend per.
I'll make a motion to, uh, change amount and F per Tyler from eighty-nine hundred to seventy-six hundred, and, and G from one million four hundred and nine thousand three hundred to one million three hundred and one.
Do I have a second in the motion?
Seven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carries.
No, I think we want to do. Doing conditional, we can do that. So we have to add that to it?
Yeah.
So we'll have to add that to this. To authorize.
Authorize administration to sign, yeah. So we're gonna, we're gonna add to the agenda authorization for administration to sign everything after we hear from you on Wed- Wednesday to go, to move forward with the loan.
More.
Yeah, after you get it to me, then we'll, or the time. Okay.
This for the loan?
Yeah.
I'll call you Senator Stewart.
Make a motion now?
Yep.
Make a motion to add a conditional approval for the loan for the fire truck?
All in favor, say a, or, se- second? Questions?
Yeah, question, that's if they approve.
Yeah, that's conditional, yeah.
Yeah, set one.
Right.
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay, that's the amendments made to the agenda. Public comment, is there anybody who'd like to address council at this time?
I'm out, sir. Hi, my name is Linda Law, uh, I'm from the main street in Louis Town, and I'm currently running for, uh, Louis Town Borough Tax Collector. I was born and raised here my entire life, and left probably in my thirties and moved to Snyder County, then Union County. And after twenty-five years in the borough, and my husband passed away, and decided just to come back to town, because my daughter, son, along with grandchildren are in McLaur. And just, they, they just needed me in back, so here I am. Um, I started with Frank Barrier in my twenties doing income taxes and accounting. And I've kept my hand in it forever, I've done taxes out of my home, but I am a retired nurse. So, the first two years back in town, I worked for Bob Church in McLaur, doing taxes and accounting. And this year, I just kind of ran into Frank and popped my head in, and it's like, hey, I'm back. So, long story short, I'm doing taxes again at Frank Barriers, and I've just met and talked to a lot of people. This was not on my bucket list, but now it is. And I was serious about this, I, I've heard a lot of complaints and discrepancies, discrepancies from older people who wanted to get copies of their tax bills for the property tax rebate, which is rare in court in this time of year. Sometimes, it's their only income, it's their only way to stream income. I guess what I would, what I am going to push is just the responsibility of when I set hours, I'm going to be there. I have a separate phone, I'm going to answer that phone, and, um, I'm retired, I really have nothing else to do. So, you know, it just, it is something I'm looking forward to, but I know everyone's looking at me and saying, who is number one? But that's okay, I'm trying to get my name out here. Um, I'm on the Republican ballot, but this isn't, I, I know not a political election, so Democrats can write my name in. Um, I just am going to start eating feed and getting my name and face out there after April fifteenth. This next week is going to be tax week, lovely tax, last of tax week, that's all I'm gonna say nicely about it, but, um, after that, I mean, I just plan on just getting my name and face out there, and I'd really approve, I mean, I'd really appreciate anything you can do for me. Just passing the word along.
Question, uh, are you looking to do this out of your home, or do you wanna, or do you want an office here at, at the borough again?
Well, if, if I got an office at the borough here, do you have Saturday hours at all?
No, but that's all negotiable.
Okay, because I really, really believe that would be imperative. I mean, you know, you've gotta be available when people are off work, evenings, Saturdays, I, I just think that's very imperative, and if the borough would be willing to work with me on Saturdays, absolutely. I mean, I have no building in mind, because I don't know whether I'm going to win the election, so, but I would really, really consider this first, yes.
Relax, Bob, we're not gonna give your office up.
I got, I got a man in there that says tax collector.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for putting your name out there, we appreciate that.
Okay, and thanks for your time.
You're welcome. We're moving to consent agenda, is there any questions or any needs pulled out from consent agenda that council would like to pull out at this time? I have a question on I, but other than that, um, does anybody else have anything?
You mean C one?
I'm sorry, yeah, C one, I'm sorry. Question. Um, the kid connection, I, I understand it was moved to Rec Park, um, do we have a facility use form for that, and when was that decided?
So, they turned in a facility re- use request, this was kind of going back and forth, they wanted to do it downtown. I believe it always happened in April, they bumped it to May, um, and our, our feedback from downtown businesses was they would like to see it at the park, because they felt like it was tying up the businesses. On those, on that Saturday. Um, and I think.
The side street traffic?
I think the side seat traffic, and I think with you seeing things happening around the country with people driving through streets that are occupied, it, it just made more sense, if we could get this to the park. That was a m- a better place for it, and, you know.
What's the date of it, May what?
May tenth.
May tenth.
Yeah.
All right.
And while I have, um, the crowd here, Friends of the Embassy concert, just to make a note of that one. That is the Saturday, I think, before the Fourth of July, it's when Louis Town does their fireworks. Um, I had talked with Frida Richards, and I, I maybe talked on your behalf, and I apologize if I talked out of turn, but they were asking if, because they sit down in front of the embassy for their community concert. They had requested if we could put, um, some fire trucks on each side of them. Maybe, you know, to A, protect them, because they're all sitting there listening to the communit- community band on that street. They were just fearful of someone driving through there, so they asked if, like, maybe, you know, fire trucks could park at each end in the event there's no calls or anything like that, so.
I had already talked to Bob about this myself.
That's something that's doable. We'll put your truck in front, me in front.
Okay, okay, okay. Hey, we can set garbage trucks there, I tell you.
It might not smell the greatest, but.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Okay, um, pending a motion to accept the consent agenda at this point? So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Fire chiefs report.
Hey, it's gonna be short and sweet, I'm gonna go, try to prevent it from working. Um, city responded twenty-two calls last month, Heritage responded to sixteen. Um, this Saturday at Station fourteen, eight o'clock, there's a hazmat operations refresher. Um, obviously, people, if they get their mail, the yearly fund drive is out and in full swing, as far as I know there. Um, I'm not gonna elaborate on it much, but obviously, um, everyone knows we had a sort of disaster on Grand Street a couple Sundays ago, and, um. Everybody in Louis Town Car Department did a very good job with the hazards we had. Um, a lot of cleanup, a lot of damage to property apparatus. Um, with that being said, I had a more conversation with both station captains and people that were on the scene and, um, asked them to slow down. If we don't get there, we can't help the person in need, so we just have to be a little bit more smart and responsible with that, and I'll just leave it at that. Um, Tyler, I talked to Tyler, I talked to Caitlin back when you were, and it was, uh, she had asked me to bring this to the borough's attention. So I'm gonna let Tyler do a little bit more of it, because I have no idea what a sewer reduction meter is.
Yeah, so, um. So, we, at our, um, you know, public works department, we use a lot of water to fill our street sweepers, so I said we need to get a sewer reduction meter, because it reduces the, your sewer bill, because obviously you're paying your sewer bill based on water usage. Summer's whispering in my ear that the city does not use, or even just Heritage, they don't use enough, even though they're water. So it's only like two thousand gallons, but a sewer reduction meter, essentially, if you are using a lot of water, filling a swimming pool, something like that, you don't have to pay for that treatment of water, because it's not ending up in our sewer system. It's ending up in the ground or stuff like that, so, um, but we'll look into it and see.
Can, some of what, we only use two thousand gallons?
Yeah, like, the, do you get the, do you get the bill, do you know?
Yeah, we just got a letter saying it was gonna go up, and because we used over one EDU or whatever it is.
They just think that they.
That was, well, was that one I asked about, and they had a leak, I don't know, that was Heritage.
Let me look into it, we'll look into usage, because if you got the letter, that means that it was, you're over sixty thousand gallons, which.
Yeah, we're seventy, the research was like eight of it, seventy.
Okay, yeah, so then I think a sewer reduction meter would be something for sure, and I'm curious of why they couldn't have done that before, but, yeah, because if you're, if you're using seventy thousand gallons in a year. And sixty-five of it is going to wash your fire trucks and hoses and stuff like that. You shouldn't, right, you shouldn't have to pay for that treatment of water when it's not really, it's not getting treated, so. I will look into, we'll look into it here at the.
But did you look for both, and then there again, as, you know, obviously, everybody's, it's at two hundred and thirty-four dollars per meter, is that something the borough would have installed for the stations? Or would Jones have the stations do it themselves?
Or at least give it to us, so we can have it installed?
I think that's how it is, yeah.
No, we have to pay for it.
Yeah, they, they're not ours, they're the water companies. What, what was the dollar amount?
Two thirty-four.
Two thirty-four. You have to buy them from the water company.
But they're here to be purchased.
Yeah. But it's just a straight pass through of money, we don't, there's no money made or anything, it's just more of a convenience.
Yeah, but if he does the install, I think that's what they're asking.
I mean, you would hire, I mean, we just put one in, down at the, at the warehouse, and we had our guys do it, so I mean. I don't know how council feels about them.
I don't know if, to Summer's point there, I don't know if it would be beneficial if the usage is only seventy thousand gallons. That's really not a lot for a year. To be honest with you, it's.
I would just ask, I, like, said, I don't.
Just for, for comparison, just to give you some numbers to compare, I'm probably none of the higher water usage in, in the borough, but we have a family of six, we use about twenty-nine thousand a quarter. So, you're looking at a hundred and twenty thousand gallons a year for residential. So, seventy thousand for a bit, well, for an organization that has a lot of people coming in, using the restroom and stuff like that, it's probably not that bad.
Then I guess, maybe my question is, can you just keep us at one EDU? Why do you have to charge us the extra?
I think some of that goes into the fairness of how the, the rates are calculated for the wastewater treatment plant. Wastewater treatment plant, we don't fund by ourselves, we fund with Dairy Township and Granville Township, and there's calculations that went to that. We pay a percentage, Dairy Township pays a percentage, service Granville Township.
I think we could probably keep them under the one, because we're not treating that water. You guys, you guys fill your trucks up with the station, at the station, top them off, you wash them, wash hoses and stuff like that, so. Yeah, let me, I'll dig into it this week and see what, yep.
Thank you, I'm done, thank you.
Nothing from the mayor, the police chief, uh, Burris Whister?
Can I just say something?
Yeah, you can. You're not one of the mil- yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The PSAB requires the Milton and Junett Councilors Association to meet once a year. And I have scheduled it for the twenty-third of this month. And I've scheduled it at Rec Center. And I have a, I sent to the other boroughs, I can give that to you if anybody's interested. But the, there's a social gathering at six, the meal will be at six-thirty. And then after the meal is over, then we'll have a short business meeting.
What time's the social hour? What time's the social hour?
Just a half hour.
Is this what we did at IHOP last year?
Yes, yeah.
What's the cost for council to be there?
There's no charge for anybody. And you can bring a guest if you like.
Is that being catered?
Yeah.
If I do, I'll call earlier.
Another thing, I received a call from a gentleman on behalf of his mother that lives on South Grand Street. It's a situation with a cat problem. The neighbor was feeding the cats and already the cats have destroyed her flower beds. They're using it for litter box. And I thought we had some ruling on if somebody was feeding the cats. Didn't we do something about that a couple years ago?
I don't remember.
Something Logan and Marble Street, I thought we dealt with that.
And Montgomery Avenue.
Yeah, Montgomery Avenue, yes, but I don't remember.
But I couldn't remember.
You never have it.
I don't know what the stipulation was on.
I think it's one of those things that every time you ask codes or you try to enact an ordinance, it's the whole enforcement of it. How do you, how do you enforce it, I think is, I think the enforcement piece is what it comes down to.
Right, I know we had talked about some ordinances, but I don't think anything was ever in there.
No, I don't think anything was ever...
Because I even, I think we looked at Huntington County ordinance and whoa. Like, they weren't even wanting you to own a cat, essentially, and it just, yeah.
But we can look into it, revisit it and see, yeah.
Appreciate that, was that a poem that I have?
There's really not any, yeah.
It's unfortunate.
I think really what we figured out was you would need like a trap and neuter and release tape.
Well, we had somebody doing that, right? What was her name?
Huntington.
Oh, she quit.
Yeah, I remember they did come from Huntington and talk about it.
Yeah, they came to meeting that time.
If we looked into like, talking into one of these organizations, what is it, like furry friends or something? What if, what if they, if we paid them so much a cat to come in and safely trap the cats? In like a box trap and then put them up for adoption or whatever, right?
I think the only way...
Because there is a cat problem.
You would need to trap and neuter them, I think.
And with the warmer weather coming, you know, yeah.
I know there's a place over in Lower's Garden, you could probably use some cats over there, I could take them over.
Really?
Yeah, Tyler's house.
Listen, we have enough as it is.
I think the program over time has been that way.
You'd have to allocate so much of your...
Anything else, mayor?
Uh, no.
No.
Thank you.
All my stuff is dealt with in the new business, so...
Okay, we'll move into new business. Oh, no, we burn manager.
No, we're good.
We're good, we can roll.
Does anyone have a question for me? Anybody having for Tyler at this point? Okay, new business.
All right, so the first one is the approval of the resolution twenty-five-two is to enact temporary signage for parking by permit only in the North Plaza lots.
How's council on that? Except the motion.
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Pose.
The second one here, I got this from the county. I guess each year they do a Milton County Hazard Mitigation Plan and they just need a resolution signed by us that we will be part of it.
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Pose. Number three, or C?
C is just the, Mark, do you have anything to add? Changes to the chapter fifty-five ordinance about changing the meeting time.
Right, we talked about, I guess we wanted to get this done, changing them to the third Monday at six, so rolling into this month, we can actually have the meeting. And we got rid of some language that didn't really apply anymore. So it was just kind of a cleanup and change the date and time.
Do you have a motion? All in favor say aye. Pose.
That's a tough one there.
D, this is recommend approval to proceed with obtaining bids for alley paving between North Pott and North Walnut. And this would be paid out of state local fuels as...
Recommend to proceed with the bids.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
So E, so this is a kind of a preventive maintenance and replacement of some parts. With the new roof going on at the digester, this methane system that we have that is the sole purpose of putting back this roof, the one that we're putting on is to capture methane gas, which in return runs our boilers and expansion tanks and stuff like that. Nothing has ever been done with that methane system. And I feel that with us putting on a brand-new roof, it is in our best interest to update this methane system at its co-star's purpose, so...
Will this come out of wastewater?
Yes.
Roll call, vote on this one, please. We need a motion. Motion, I'm sorry.
So...
Second? Roll call.
Matt Moore?
Yes.
Bob Barlett?
Yes.
Scott Gutsho?
Yes.
Heavy Seer?
Yeah.
Jim Steels. Steve Nutson?
Yes.
Lisa Nutson?
Yes.
Motion carries. F?
F is approval to replace nine surge protection modules at the treatment plant at a cost of seventy-six hundred. So these surge protection modules, in the event of any power outages or something, this is going to protect the electronics at the treatment plant. We got two bids, one was eighty-nine hundred and the other one came in seventy-six hundred. So I think it's important that we protect those modules.
Do we have a motion?
Roll call. Under question.
Yes.
What, if, what did you say the two prices were?
One was eighty-nine and the other one was seventy-six.
What, why are we buying the eighty-nine then?
Um, I, we changed it. We amended the, when, we amended and changed the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, to go with the seventy-six hundred.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Matt Moore?
Yes.
Bob Barlett?
Yes.
Scott Gutsho?
Yes.
Heavy Seer?
Yes.
Steve Nutson?
Yes.
Lisa Nutson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
G? Okay, so now we're going to get into awarding these bids. So first one here is to recommend approval to award JP Environmental LLC for the anaerobic digester slash mixing system bid. You obviously can see the contract number there. This one was the one that we just changed from one million four hundred and nine thousand three hundred and the total cost is going to be one million three hundred and nine thousand three hundred now. So it's about a savings of a hundred thousand dollars. Like I said, meeting with One Water Technologies today, super impressed. They have these dual membrane roofs. When I say all over the world, I legit mean all over the world. So they are in just about every climate you can humanly think of. And talking with the Eeds Group, our wastewater treatment plant operators, this was their recommendation to go with the order of bid.
So I have a question. What all does this include? Does this include the roof and the lining of the tank and everything that we need to finish the project?
Yes. We are nearing the finish line of this project.
When will this be online? When do you think the plant will be online? Oh, Seth's back here. Hi, Seth.
They're trying to coordinate. He said basically they'll get the roof whenever they can, they can push that to the front. So they still have to core through the wall and reline. Vaughn Pump Manufacturing will probably be the latest getting in. And then after that, we'll be ready, we'll put that on, I think he said around a week probably.
Yeah.
And then we'll be in. So basically it lies in Vaughn's hands and USG is in line right now. And then shortly after that...
So we looking in the summer or before the summer is over?
I would say August, September is the time.
Okay.
But if for some reason Vaughn gets the pump and the mixing system sooner, One Water Technologies will bump us up in production and get us a roof right away.
Because it's been offline for what, thirty months now so far? Something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Motion, you need a motion.
Scott, motion. I think you just had.
No, wait, yeah.
Oh, you... We're in G, I'm sorry. So I need a motion, I'm sorry. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Matt Moore?
Yes.
Bob Barlett?
Yes.
Scott Gutsho?
Yes.
Heavy Seer?
Yes.
Steve Nutson?
Yes.
Lisa Nutson?
Yes.
H?
H is to, uh, preferable to award LEZ electric for the electric to work at that cost of eight thousand five eighty-one.
Is that for the, the new pump?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion. Roll call, please.
Matt Moore?
Yes.
Bob Barlett?
Yes.
Scott Gutsho?
Yes.
Heavy Seer?
Yeah.
Steve Nutson?
Yes.
Lisa Nutson?
Yes.
And then we added letter I to recommend approval to authorize administrations to sign the documents for the lease of the fire truck. Obviously contingent upon the signature of those documents from Heritage.
Do we have a motion? Second? Need a second? Sorry. I'm waiting for it to catch up.
Matt Moore?
Yes.
Bob Barlett?
Yes.
Scott Gutsho?
Yes.
Heavy Seer?
Yeah.
Steve Nutson?
Yes.
Lisa Nutson?
Yes.
Okay, public comment for anything that does not, that did not pertain to be on the agenda? Do I have anybody who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Michael Colgrin. I just wanted to come down and introduce myself and my new MSG for the evening.
Thanks, Mike.
Nice to meet you.
I'll leave the borough manager my card after the meeting and anybody has any questions. And we're having an open house for AM this week on May twenty-second and y'all are invited.
You have business cards.
Thank you.
No. No, you're not getting it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Caitlin will make them for you free of charge.
All right, this time we're going to adjourn for executive session. Okay, we're back in.
Do I, employee one? Make a motion to move employee A? Oh, add to the agenda first. Add to the agenda of moving employee A into the secretary, administrative secretary position.
This is to add it to, this is to add it to the agenda. Do I have a second on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose?
No.
Okay, now we need to make a motion to...
Make a motion to move employee A into the administrative secretary position, non-union.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Pose?
No.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh! I'm sorry.
What was it?
Take that back.
Take it back.
If you want to.
Your motion that you just did, is that what's on the paper up there? Because I can't, I can't.
Wait here, we made a motion, I don't know.
Yeah, he had it, he had it.
One of you has to make the motion if you want to. So we're going to add to the agenda first.
Yes, to discuss.
I make a motion to add to the agenda the hiring of Joseph Leiter to the police department, depending psych about.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose?
No.
Now we need the regular motion. That was to add it to the agenda.
Make a motion to hire Joseph Leiter to the police department, depend, pending on his psych about.
Do I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Matt Moore?
No.
Bob Barlett?
Yes.
Scott Gutsho?
No.
Heavy Seer?
No.
Steve Nutson?
Yes.
Lisa Nutson?
Yes.
Mayor breaks the tie with tonight or within five days.
Yes.
Four to three, motion passes. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor say aye. Pose?